... minutes here of the meeting. And it looks like it's about seven o'clock. And I think we have the members here that are gonna be here, so we'll call to order the October 16th, 2014, meeting of the zoning board of appeals in Reading. The first case we have on the agenda tonight is case number 1418. Is that petitioner here?
Yes.
Okay. Let me go ahead and read through the orders here, and then you can have your say on that. Yep. Okay, we'll read the legal notice. Here we go. "The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing in the selectman's meeting room at the town hall, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, on Thursday, October 16th, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. on the petition of LCB Senior Living LLC who seeks a special permit under section 4.7.3(c) of the zoning bylaws in order to install a municipal building reuse sign on the property located at 75 Pearl Street, Reading, Massachusetts." Unless there is an objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abutters list, except to say that the abutters were notified, as were the following: Board of Selectmen, Town Clerk, Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, Conservation Commission, Health Department, Assessors Office, Engineering Division, CPDC, and members and associate members of the Board of Appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Linfield, North Reading, Stonemont, Woburn, and Wilmington. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath. So if you think you may want to speak, please stand and raise your right hand, and I'll let me see the oath, okay? "I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, responses I do."
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The floor is yours.
My name's Ted Doyle, I'm from LCB Senior Living. We recently purchased the assisted living community on 75 Pearl Street, and we have since renamed the community, the residence, at Pearl Street. For that purpose, we erected a temporary sign which is on the property right now, and what we would like to do is now install a permanent sign for identification of the property from the street. The sign itself conforms to the dimensional bylaws. It does fall under the historic reuse, and therefore the ZBA's authority. And I have conferred with Mr. Redmond on this application to make sure that it was complete and in the order that you would expect it to be. I'm not sure if anyone has any questions about the sign or us, but I'm happy to answer whatever you have left in here.
Okay. Yep, thank you. I do believe, let me see here, that we did receive, yes, Glenn doesn't get it tonight, but he did leave us a memo on this. And I will go ahead and read his comment on that. I think it was in the package there, but... Case number 1418, 75 Pearl Street. Glenn notes, "This is a municipal reuse sign application for 75 Pearl Street, and a special permit under section 4.7.3(c) is required." Glenn notes, "He does not have any objection for this request." So... David, any questions of the applicant?
I have an observation.
Okay.
And that is that I think the applicant needs to amend his application, and I think we should probably do that here, because you've cited to the wrong section of 4.7.3.
Ah.
Maybe that was just a typo on the application that was filled out. You've got the right one, but that doesn't seem to have made it into the posting and into the hearing.
Right, I see, it should be E. Three E instead of three C, right?
Oh, yeah, no, it should be E.
It should be E, and it seems to have either been transcribed incorrectly or somehow never made it there.
We'll make note of that, yep.
We should proceed under E.
E, right.
And other than that, I have no questions.
Kathleen?
I have no questions.
John, any questions?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Si?
The only one I have is there's a couple of sets of prints in here. One of them is dated June 6th, which shows tutorials of what is temporarily on the board now. And we received another one dated 9/3, which shows a different print type.
That's correct, yeah.
Is what's there correct, or is what...
Well, I think you might have received what we submitted in order to put the temporary sign up.
Probably, that one was in the package.
Yeah. What we submitted was the one that you have in front of you that shows the green sign with the 75 Pearl down below, the arch, the arch. That's the sign that we would like to put up.
So instead of what's up there now is written like it's written at Pearl Street?
Yeah, exactly. We determined across the company of why that that convention is a little difficult to read from the street, and we want to make it obviously safe and accurate, so we did change that.
So the one that applies is September 6th?
Yeah, the block letters, yes.
That's all I have.
Okay. I had some observations, as David said, when I looked at it. Sign is less than 15 square feet in area, and it only identifies the building and the occupants, I think, which meets the regulations of the sign code there, 3E. And it does replace the existing sign that was there with the previous owner at that time, so this just reflects the new owner on this. So other than that, I don't have any further comments. John?
A couple of questions. Under the sign bylaw, this calculates out to be exactly 15 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
And it says under 15 square feet in the bylaw? Or does it say 15 square feet?
I think it says it can't exceed 15 square feet.
Yeah. The second question is, you only have the one sign, correct?
That's correct.
You don't have one in front of the building?
No.
You just have this one sign?
Yes.
Sign at the entrance to the facility. Only question I have.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't...
No larger than 15 square feet, John.
No, not by... Is that what it said?
Yes, no larger than.
No larger than. So we're all set there with this, I thought. And personally, I didn't have any issues with it, and it was pretty straightforward. Seems to meet the building inspectors' okay on that. I would entertain a motion at this time from... Oh, excuse me, let me open it up. Is there anybody here from the public who would like to comment on this issue? Sir, I'd like to swear you in, you didn't take the oath before.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, responses I do.
I do.
Okay. Yes, if you name an address...
I understand. 15 should question?
Okay.
I have a question, is... Are you just... It says it's a reuse of a public building. Is that the specific section of the zoning bylaws? The notice that I got was that a sign was gonna be submitted.
It's a reuse of an existing sign, a sign that was...
A sign or existing building?
Well, it's kind of both, but what he's here for tonight is to put up a new sign in place of the older sign which identified what the building was before.
But the notice said it was a reuse of an existing public building. And at that, just question, what...
The building was previously used as a school.
I understand, I've been here...
When the permit was granted for the signage, it was based upon the reuse of a municipal structure.
Yeah.
That became the premise upon which we're moving now, so it's just, it's like a domino.
Yeah, I understand that now, okay, that's the question.
And it is, it maybe could have been worded better, but I'm looking at installing municipal building reuse sign, though, basically.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other further questions or comments? No? I will go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting, and I would entertain a motion from somebody. Kathleen?
I move to approve the petition of LCB Senior Living LLC who seeks a special permit under section 4.7.3(c) of the zoning bylaws in order to install a municipal building reuse sign on the property located at 75 Pearl Street in Reading, Massachusetts. Should we reference this, as referenced?
Sure, I would reference the sign now.
In the documents submitted by the petitioner, prepared by Gensign Design Engineering, 841 Worcester Road, Suite, looks like 514, Natick, Mass.
Did we cite to the right section of the bylaw?
And...
Yes, E.
E.
And that looks like, this looks like it was dated September 3rd, 2014.
Exactly.
And it's two pages.
Yes. Sheet one of two and two of two.
Okay.
Yep.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Second from David. Any further questions from board members? If not, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Okay, let it be said, it passes, you'll have your permit, okay. We have some documents for you. I will stamp this in, and you'll have a record that this is the plan that was approved. And we'll write up a decision on this, and that'll be recorded with the town clerk within two weeks. The decision has to be done within two weeks. We'll get that into the town clerk, and then from there, that has to be recorded at the registry of deeds. Okay? Okay. 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 Move along. Next case we have on the agenda is case number 1419. Is that applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
How you doing?
Good. Let me go through and read the procedural information here, and we'll go from there. Legal notice. Yeah, you have it right there. Okay, thank you. "The zoning board of appeals will hold a special, will hold a public hearing in the selectman's meeting room at Town Hall, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, on Thursday, October 16th, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. on the petition of Anthony Leo who seeks a variance under section 5.0/5.1.2 of the zoning bylaws in order to construct an addition 24 feet by 40 feet with a proposed side yard setback of 3.3 feet rather than the required side yard setback of 15 feet on the property located at 18 Shady Hill Lane, Reading, Massachusetts." John, you read that right. "Unless there is an objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abutters list, except to say that the abutters were all notified, as were the following: Board of Selectmen, Town Clerk, Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, Conservation Commission, Health Department, Assessors Office, Engineering Division, CPDC, members and associate members of the Board of Appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Linfield, North Reading, Stonemont, Woburn, and Wilmington. Testimony given before the board is taken under oath. So if you think you may want to speak, and this includes anybody who may want to get up in the public hearing portion, please stand and raise your right hand. Okay? 'I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, responses I do.'"
I do.
Okay. The floor is yours.
I just want to thank the zoning board, obviously, for the appeal for the variance of 5.1. My name is Anthony Leo, 18 Shady Hill Lane. We submitted the variance a couple of months ago, the application for the variance. We listed the four questions of criteria in regards to why we feel we are going for the additional living space. If there are questions, I'd be happy to address those questions to the best of my ability.
Okay. Thank you. Again, Glenn had a, sent a memo on this particular case, since he wouldn't be here tonight, and I'll go ahead and read it. Building inspector notes, "This is a proposal to construct an addition 24 feet by 40 feet with a side yard setback of 3.3 feet rather than the side yard setback of 15 feet. A variance for this proposal is required. This property is located in the S-15 district. The applicant has been informed of the difficulty in obtaining a variance." That is Glenn's notes on that. Si, I'll start with you this time, okay? We'll change it up a little bit. Would you like to comment on this?
This is a fairly good-sized addition to a piece of property that's there now on a very small lot.
Yes, sir.
The argument or the information you put forth on your variance write-up, I certainly can't disagree with your response to section one of that, of the variance criteria. I mean, it is a very difficult lot.
Yes.
To go in any directions.
Thank you, yes.
Okay?
I agree.
Even the direction you're going in, I think, is difficult.
Yep.
So, I can't, I can't disagree with that. I don't know what the financial burden is to go in a direction other than the one you're at, and you acknowledge that it's gonna be tough.
Yeah. That's a good, that's a good way to put it.
Qualitize that in any way compared to where it's going now.
Yes.
So I think that, that argument is a little weak. The only, as far as the detriment to the public good, if you look at that property, I don't know what the feeling is of the, of your abutter on that side of the property.
Yep.
That's very close to the lot line.
Yeah.
And I know if I was living there, I might have a problem with that, but...
That's right, yeah.
Okay? So that's just an opinion, okay? And I don't know, is that, is that neighbor here tonight, or they, they put anything together?
No, we did approach the neighbor verbally, without writing a letter of consent or in love of that nature. And we did, verbally speaking, to them, we notified them when we got the date and time. And they did not have any disagreement or any concerns by all. Matter of fact, she approved, in her mind, she'd build as much as she wanted to that point, but that was verbally done. It was not written in a letter of that nature, but...
Because what you're doing is you're putting that, that side wall on your, on the addition, very close to the side wall of their house. I mean, I don't know what that distance is from their house to the lot line.
Yeah, it's a good distance to their garage. That would be their garage in their house above their garage. It's probably, I would say, maybe 30, 40, maybe 20 yards total from where their house starts to begin. So it's really not next to, abutting directly to it. But I understand what you're saying.
Other than further questions at this time?
John, you're here?
Well, first I must apologize. I always look at the property before coming to the meeting and look to see what the conditions are and so forth. I picked up and prepared for the two, two cases, one of which was the wrong case, so I did not even look at the property. To tell you the truth, I'm, I'm not prepared to address what the, what it looks like, and certainly in the past, I've never gone on anybody's property without asking permission first, but that being said, I wasn't even there, so...
Yeah. You're more than welcome to come, yeah.
But I think I would sign on with Si in a couple of respects. One, it's a substantial addition to the house.
Yeah.
It does encroach within 3 and 3 1/3 feet of the property line. Variances are very, very difficult to prove in the, in the beginning. In the first two arguments, one I can't address because I didn't see it, but from Si looking at it, what you have done here, I can see that there are substantial, or what appears to be substantial reasons why you can't build in this place else.
Yeah.
The second issue is that variances do not address cost factors, per se, so that becomes, as I again said, a little bit on the weak side. But the thing that, the issue that perhaps is a little questionable is the size of the addition, especially on the 3.3 side setback. And the question that I would ask is, you know, we're not even looking at half of that distance. We're looking at virtually almost the entire distance there. And I see back to the, to the jog, that is basically half of the distance on the setback. Not that I'm suggesting you go back that far, but I, I don't, my, my big question to you would be, what alternatives did you look at beside that particular size addition relative to the existing house versus putting that same addition someplace else on the lot?
Yeah, so, so we initially looked at going out to the back of the house, and because there is a cesspool and a septic there and a deck, and it would cost financial hardship in the sense that we would have to redo our kitchen, which is pretty much the main living space of the middle portion of the house, that and about them. And so we were trying to refrain from going that direction. The other side of the house, the southeast side of the house, there is a town easement, and so that wasn't gonna help us. And so the only alternative was to do it on the, what we would deem as the, I guess, the northwest side or on the other side of the house. And so from a standpoint, we did look at making it smaller, and that was, but it wasn't conducive to where, what we were looking for at the time of talking to the contractors and talking to the design engineer. And so if you notice on the design drawings, he did convert it a little bit, the first part of it, and then kind of just back out to the backside of it. So we did play around with it to the best of our ability, and, you know...
So what you're talking about is rehabbing, it's split, I assume, right?
It is, sir, yes, sir.
So you're talking basically about rehabbing the entire second floor or the top half of a existing house?
The back, yeah, yes. It would be a, yes, to answer your question. Essentially moving it back on the other side, stacking it out on the other side of a split, for a split.
But the kitchen is still in the same location as it is today?
It is. Yes, we do not intend, the purpose was not to touch the kitchen because we didn't want to move into additional expenses. We were just looking for more living space, essentially, and that was the best location we could actually place the addition.
So your thought is that right now you could not move it back?
It's, it's somewhat up a hill, so if we move it back further than what it is, it would cause additional burden to what's already, to what Si was saying earlier, that you're gonna cause even additional drilling and ledge, potential chipping and removal of soil, so...
Such a great room is like 24 by 18, which is... I guess I'm looking at, what, what did you go through to say, "We want all of this stuff, we're willing to reduce it to something that's more reasonable," because variances, as Si has already mentioned, are very difficult.
Sure.
Unless you meet all four of the criteria, not just three of it, which you must meet[1585.83] of the criteria, not just three of it, which you must meet all four. I'll just leave it at that and see what everybody else asks.
Okay.
The one question I had was, I know you have an immediate neighbor, but there also looked to be a house just like kitty corner?
Yes.
To the back? And are they in favor of...
Well, they were sent the, part of the...
So that's who you sent it to them? Did you speak with them as well?
We did not verbally speak with them, we don't. It's kind of kitty corner, it's about five feet, you know, two fences in between.
Right, it looks almost to be closer to them than it does to your immediate neighbor, is that right?
No, no, it would be, it would be more closer to the...
Immediate neighbor, okay.
Yes, yes. That neighbor in the back would, it's a good distance, and then there's two fences in between them.
Okay, so there's two fences.
Yeah.
I think that's all for right now.
Great, thank you so much, Karen.
David?
Yeah, I guess I just want to go over the first variance criteria, both with you. You know, this board is, this board is interested in doing what's right, given what the law allows us to do. And the statutory requirements for a variance are, they set the bar high for a reason. And so I want to make sure before we, before we move further, that the peculiarity, that's the statutory word, there's a peculiarity of shape, that's not really here. But what you're saying is because of the hill or the mound or the ledge in the back of the house, that's what makes the lot peculiar?
I think, sorry, Si has mentioned earlier, the lot itself is somewhat, I guess, if you want to refer to it as asymmetrical, I think, more than anything else. So it's not necessarily a square block. And so given the easement, the cesspool, and the septic, directly in the back of the house, and the kitchen, that was the only location that we deemed supports the addition, or at least the proposed addition.
All right, and then the second and third, under number one, the second and third piece, the water drain easement and the septic pool. I get the impression that most of what your application is based on is in that sub-paragraph one. Because two and three really don't add the, really don't meet the criteria, but I think in the interest of adding more information, you might have added those in. Just to point those out for the board, would that be fair? Or, help me understand that, you just kind of...
So if I understand your question, you're asking, so question two and three don't...
Under number one, I'm sorry, maybe I'm, you have paragraph one with sub-paragraphs one, two, and three under them, and so on. So that's what I'm, just the top paragraph, that has little indented paragraphs, one, two, and three.
Yes.
Okay, so those indented paragraphs, one, two, and three, the first one is the hill directly in the middle of the property.
Yes.
And that's what we just went over, because there's some ledge there, and that relates to the topography.
Right, yes.
And then the last, the numbers two and three indented paragraphs there, related to the water drain easement and the septic and cesspool, right?
Yes.
Okay. But those not, those aren't necessarily related to anything related to the shape, or the topography, or the soil conditions related to the lot, right? So you just added them for some additional information to point those out, that, those conditions out?
To address the question number two on the variance criteria, where it says, describe how little enforcement the provisions, and then otherwise financial hardship, yes. So we pointed them out to kind of caveat off the first question, because it kind of flowed together, yes.
Okay, all right.
And there was also more of, you know, how, just to really point out that there is a financial object there, from a standpoint of taking out a septic, taking out a deck, possibly redoing a kitchen. So we did look at that initially.
All right, so maybe I didn't ask this question right. Let me try it again. You want the board to take into consideration, indented paragraph two and indented paragraph three, as part of your application, that you meet the first criteria of a variance?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I guess that's, that's what I was getting at. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I did go up and look at the property, and looking at the topo map, et cetera, on this, I noted that it is in the S-15 district, legal non-conforming lot due to less than the required frontage, and also lot area there. It's, you know, S-15, fifteen thousand, you have twelve thousand, et cetera. Question I had, and you do have a septic system in your backyard, and that is one of the reasons why you didn't want to extend it in that direction, the southerly direction in the backyard. You do have a municipal sewer in the street, though, do you not?
Yes, yes, I imagine so, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm sure the town would love to have you connect to the municipal sewer system.
Yeah.
And get rid of these septic systems.
Yeah.
So I don't know how valid that is, as a reason why you don't want to do it. Yes, you would have to disrupt that and do some replumbing and relay and connecting the municipal, and I think that's a plus to the town if you do that.
Yeah.
Get rid of a septic system there. I don't know if you've had issues with it at all, or...
Knock on wood, no.
It works well, or...
It works well, yeah, we get it, you know, pumped every year or so.
Yeah.
And so it works out.
Okay, because it is, it does appear that there is ledge in that area, certainly, but obviously it works. Now, that was one of my questions, have you looked into abolishing that, getting rid of your septic system and connecting to the municipal sewer?
Mr. Redford, if we did that, you would still have to do the kitchen over and replace a deck.
Yes.
Before you even, you know, remove the septic and the cesspool.
Right.
I mean, that significantly incurs an expense on the family that we weren't expecting, quite frankly.
Okay, and you're right, I do see the, on your plot plan here, the building envelope indicated with the dash line there. Certainly, I think you could, if you did come in off the back, certainly fit it all within that building envelope there, and you wouldn't be up here for a variance then.
Yeah.
But you do have that expense and, et cetera, with your septic system.
And there's also a hill there as well, as you're climbing up there.
Climbing up, yeah. I did, what you did provide, I think, here, there is a, yeah, contour map on one of your issues here. It looks like, yeah, it goes uphill towards the addition that you want, towards your westerly side?
Straight across.
Straight acro, yeah.
Yeah, to the back of the backyard.
Right, and it looks like it's a, it's a low point, kind of, yeah, a low area down on your, would be your easterly property line, is lower than your westerly property line there, yeah, on that. Well, as I say, it's very difficult to get a variance, and especially, I mean, you know, asking for the variance that you're asking for. It's supposed to be fifteen foot, and you're asking us to give you a variance for eleven point seven feet.
Yeah.
It's quite a bit. Have you thought about talking to your abutting property owner about purchasing land over there, enough to, on that side, on the westerly side, to, it doesn't appear that they use it?
Yeah.
You know, when I went up and took a look, it's kind of up there in rocky press, I don't know.
Yes, yes.
And, you know, reconfiguring the property line on that side to fit it in?
Yeah, that was not something that I did or approached out.
Yeah, it's possibly, it's something I thought, you know, as an option. As I said before, boards, this board anyway, in past experience, has difficulty, you know, with a variance of this size, I think, on that. But, any other questions? If not, I'll open it up to public comment.
One more.
Si, yeah?
Did you give any thought, and your proposed addition is straight along the side of that current residence, okay? Have you ever thought about maybe putting an L-shaped addition on there, part of it's off the back of the house and part of it's off the side of the house? That would buy you more setback?
Yeah.
If you did that, okay? And just looking at the plan, it would seem to me that with a little bit of thought, you still might be able to achieve what you want to do, although it'd be in a different form. It would require you had to move the deck...
Right.
Back off from it.
Right.
But that's a possibility.
We initially looked at coming, going flush with the house, and then he ended up moving the design drawings back a little further. And then he did provide the drawing with the L shape, and the way the lot was, like I mentioned earlier, but being asymmetrical in that sense, it just didn't, didn't look well on paper, quite frankly. Even though it fit the criteria, as you're saying, it just wasn't something that my family and I considered, that we wanted to move forward with, so...
I don't know if he could actually purchase, I don't know if he could purchase any frontage, because you're making the... Well, no, I don't think he could purchase frontage, but you could adjust that sideline.
Yeah.
See, something like this, John, came there, just held that, something like that. It's kind of an odd shape, but it's enough to fit it in, you know? It's an option.
Yeah.
You are, it's a tough possibility, you do have your septic system, granted, there's a way to get around that. Either you abandon it and connect to the municipal sewer. Possibly purchasing property from your abada on that. It's a large addition that you're going on, I think that Mr. Dream had noted there, that it's a pretty good size, great room. I, you know, would all like to have that if we could, but you do have a constraint with your property.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of people in Reading, because of the lots, sizes, et cetera, have to live with their constraints on that.
Did you think about taking that whole proposed addition you got there now, and just moving that addition back?
We did do that, yes. And that was the third iteration, is going through the design, it didn't just, it didn't look well to us from that standpoint. And then it wasn't, from the way it would be viewed, it's a cul-de-sac, obviously, so from the street view, it would, it just looked awkward, quite frankly. This was the best looking for the neighborhood. It would beautify the neighborhood in the sense that it would fit into the neighborhood that's there. So we did look at a lot of options. It wasn't, you know, something that we just put together and said, we'll just go down this road. It's something we're considering, the other alternative is to sell and move to another town. And that's the, ideally, find another house in this town that we could, some of the affordable in that sense. So those are the options.
It's difficult that you've got a property with a structure on it that really doesn't allow you a lot of latitude, okay?
I know, I know, yeah.
And it's unfortunate, but it's the way life is.
So I think we ought to note, just as a board, and just remind ourselves that we're here to consider whether or not the four criteria are met, not that there may be other options, despite that there may be other suitable, you know, maybe other more suitable options, so that we're meeting our statutory mandate.
Right, right.
I know we like, we all spend an awful lot of time thinking about what we might suggest in terms of a better option, and we want to make sure that applicants have considered all options, but we're here to vote on the four criteria and whether or not those are met.
Exactly, exactly. And that's ultimately what the decision will be based upon tonight, is, has the applicant met the four criteria?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions from board members? If not, I will open it to public comment. Is anybody here from the public who would like to comment on this? If you could, I swear you in.
Okay.
I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, answer is, or responds as I do.
As I do.
Okay, if you could name an address for the record?
My name is Joe Garrilia, I live at Five Shades Hill Lane. I've been here for almost forty years, and I'd just like to comment on the lots in our particular area. There are two cul-de-sacs, we have twelve houses in total, they're all large shaped houses. And the Leo family has been there for several years, they're good neighbors, they're good people. There's no reason, I see, why they should have to move, you know, to add addition to their home so that they can add to their growing family. If you look at the proposals or the suggestions, perhaps, as it may be, of buying property from the next door neighbor, I know all these neighbors, I've spoken to them, again, there's only twelve of us, and nobody objects to this addition, including the next and butters. So, I mean, it's something that if the board sees fit to do and can approve, I think it would be great to keep a family in here, because they're good people, and I think it's a good thing to do for the town of Reading. Because it's improving property, and I invite you all to come and look at these lots, the world of strangest looking lots you've ever seen in your life. They go this way, they go that way, but it's a crazy situation. But the town approved it many years ago, so I can see, I can see what they're trying to do. He's trying to stay in the town of Reading, and I think that's a great idea, if the board would consider his request. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from public? Nobody else, I will close the public portion of the meeting. Is there any further questions from board members? John? Well, I just want to more or less reemphasize what David had said. Forty A is very specific. It says you must meet all criteria, all four criteria. And it's difficult for all the board members, as David also said, looking for options, you know, to help the applicant out. But the most difficult relief to gain through the board is through a variance. So I just wanted to reemphasize what David said, and also indicate to the applicant that in moving forward, he has basically one other option that he has not exercised yet, and I just want to throw that out there. And that is, as was mentioned, you have not looked at the alternative, as Bob said, to go to one of your neighbors and see if there's a means of taking a little slice out of his area.
Yeah.
And if the engineering department will approve that. But if you go forward, and this board were to, I'll just say, not approve you, you could not come back for a period of two years.
Right.
However, the other option to you would be to withdraw without prejudice, and perhaps look in that direction before this board actually takes a vote this evening.
Yeah.
I just offer it to you.
I appreciate the opportunity, it's not something that my wife or I would particularly necessarily think about and probably pursue, given the status of the next door of Director Abada. And so it's not, you know, I think of it as the same way that someone was asking me to sell my piece of the bike that I worked hard for all my life. And I'm sure anybody in the board can attest to that as well. When you work for something, it's yours. You don't typically want to give it up necessarily to somebody you don't know, even for your family at that time, some people don't want to give it up. So, you know, I know it's not an easy decision, as some of the Abadas have mentioned tonight, that lots are not, they're not square lots, they're not perfect lots, the homes were built in the sixties and seventies. And so we're just trying to remain in the town that we live in, we've been here ten years, the kids can love the town, they love the school system, and we want to maintain doing that, and have more living space. So it's, I respect the board for the opportunity and the decisions you guys come up with.
Okay. It's, you know, not to beat a dead horse here, but on your property, I mean, if you worked with the abada and an attorney and something, it's only a property line that's, you're looking to adjust over there to fit it in. You could create easements that you would never build there, you know, within this parcel that you purchased, you could have an easement that it's to be left in its existing state, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, things could be worked out there. You could purchase it, give an easement to your neighbor to, you know, occupy it, or not occupy it, but to use that, if they've been using it, et cetera. Keep it as a natural border between you and your abada there, which I think it pretty much acts as now as a natural border.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, things can be worked out that way, too.
Sure.
But, you know, I think you can hear what some of the board members are saying tonight. Personally, I find it difficult, given a variance for this amount. I think, you know, you may have arguments that you meet the variance, the number one, may have the criteria number one. I don't know for sure, because I think the septic system is a self-made issue. It's really got nothing to do with the topography of the land, or the shape of the lot, or something, it's something that could be alleviated.
Yeah.
And then I think, criteria number four, I think, if it were granted, would nullify and segregate the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw of the town. The town has a bylaw, has a fifteen-foot side yard setback for a purpose. And I think, you know, by doing that, for that amount, for eleven point seven feet, my personal opinion is you'd be derogating from the zoning bylaw on that substantially. But that's me. We can go on and continue, and I'll ask for a motion here on this, if you would like. As John said, there is a couple of options, you could withdraw without prejudice, you could ask for a continuation to another, to, you know, a date, possibly even then two weeks from now, which is, I believe, November sixth, we mean.
Yeah.
I think we, right now, we just have one item on the agenda that night. You could do that, talk it over with your wife, maybe, but it's up to you. We can go ahead and make a motion tonight and go with this.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Redford, I respect that, and what I would say is, make a motion and...
We will continue then.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, I will entertain a motion on this case tonight.
I will, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the Dona Board of Appeals allow the petition of Anthony Leo for a variance under five oh and five one two of our zoning bylaw in order to construct an addition with the dimensions of twenty-four by forty feet, with a proposed side yard setback of three point three feet rather than required setback of...
Fifty.
This says twenty, that's the type of...
It says twenty, the applicant, it's fifty.
Fifteen feet on the property located at eighteen Shady Hill Lane in Reading, Massachusetts, as more fully set out by the petitioner and the drawings, and, do we have a stamped plot plan? Yeah, we do.
Yes.
The, of a stamped plot plan dated July tenth, two thousand fourteen, by Edward J. Farrell, professional land surveyor of one ten Wind Streets, three two oh three, Wuerben, Mass. Farrell, professional land surveyor of one-ten Wind Streets, three-two-oh-three, Woburn, Mass. And drawings additionally submitted done by JustDrawIt.com Inc., fourteen Grove Street in Redding, Mass. Dated.
Hard to tell.
Sometime in two thousand fourteen.
I think it was June.
Is that right? Okay. I'll take your word for it. Your eyes are better than mine, but you may have a recollection of when I was on.
Only the glasses on.
Looks like June forty-fourth today.
Okay.
June, yeah.
Sold.
I think it is.
And the drawings dated June two thousand fourteen. Drawings A-one, A-two, A-three, four, A-one through four.
Okay.
So moved.
Second that, do you want to change one word in your motion?
Which word do you like, the or and?
The.
Allow to grant.
Okay. I will, I will amend my motion prior, well, you've seconded it, so I will, I will.
Oh.
I gotta, I, I, so I'll have to restate my, I'll amend my motion in order for you to second it, won't I?
I, I, but draw my.
Second to your original.
Then I'll change the word from allow to grant in the rest of the motion stands.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
And it would be standard conditions.
Yep.
Standard conditions.
On that, right. Which standard conditions are? You must get a building permit from the building inspector, foundation permit from the building inspector must be approved before you get a building permit for the superstructure.
Yes.
And then the whole thing has to be inspected by the building inspector before you get an occupancy permit.
Yes, sir.
Those are the three standard, we call them standard, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Rather than I went through those in more detail for the petitioner. No?
No, I'm good. I think it's on your website as well, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
You would have, even if we didn't even know that, you would have to do it anyway, but we like to know.
I'm sure Glenn will find that, yeah.
Yeah.
With those, with those three conditions as well.
Sure.
Plot plan and drawings amended to the word grant.
Right. Any further comments from members of the board? If not, I will take a vote on that. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. Let the record show that the motion did not pass, and the variance request was denied by a vote of zero, five, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, John.
David.
Okay.
Favoring the meeting as one of our options in the review, was that intention to look at just seven point oh, or was that to look at the entire Warren Article Eight?
We would be looking at the entire Warren, well, at least an overview of the Warren Article Eight. I have.
Just a question. Just filling the dead space between.
We'll email to us.
We can talk about that.
No, yeah, I guess, yeah, you're right.
Right, she did email it to us.
She did.
So you printed it out or something?
I did.
You don't need it.
I don't need it.
I'll put it at this.
Yep.
I don't need it.
Okay. Next case tonight, we have case, oh, look at this, I wrote, I wrote it in the wrong one, because.
I messed you up. I apologize. I already apologized.
Ah, okay.
Did you sleep out last night, John?
No. I'll have to fix that up after the meeting. Okay. Next case tonight is case number fourteen twenty. Petition is here. Right?
Yeah.
Yep. Let me go through the legal notice and, right, Kathleen.
I've got to recuse.
Has noted she's going to recuse herself from this case. But let me go ahead and open the meeting here, and we'll go from there and let you know what the ramifications of that are. Let's see. Here's the legal notice. The zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing in the Selectman's Meeting Room at the Town Hall, sixteen Lowell Street, Redding, Massachusetts, on Thursday, October sixteenth, two thousand fourteen, at seven P.M. on the petition of Karen O'Sullivan. So I got that, Karen? Yeah? Who seeks a variance under section five point zero slash five point one point two of the zoning bylaws in order to add a two-car garage to the left side with a proposed setback of ten point three feet rather than the required fifteen feet, as per the plan submitted on the property located at thirty-one Curtis Street in Redding, Massachusetts. Unless there is an objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abutters list, except to say that the abutters were notified, as were the following: Board of Selectmen, Town Clerk, Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, Conservation Commission, Health Department, Assessors' Office, Engineering Division, and CPDC; members and associate members of the Board of Appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Linfield, North Redding, Stonemont, Woburn, and Wilmington. Testimony given before the board is taken under oath. So if you think you may want to speak, please stand and raise your right hand, and I'll swear you in. I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Response as I do.
I do.
Okay, thank you. Floor is yours.
Great. For the record, my name's Jack Sullivan. I'm owner of the Sullivan Engineering Group. I'm here representing Karen and Donna O'Sullivan for this project. I'll give the, the board a little bit of background, and then I'll address the four criteria of why we think relief should be granted for this project. This is a conforming lot that's improved by an existing single-family home. There's, it's in the S-15 zoning district. There's a hundred and nine point three zero feet of frontage, a hundred feet is required. And the lot area is sixteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven square feet, so it exceeds the minimum requirement in the zoning district of fifteen thousand square feet. Mr. O'Sullivan's owned this property for fourteen years. It's an exist, it's a, it's a four-bedroom house with a one-car attached garage. It's a relatively flat lot. It's, it's a bit asymmetrical in shape. It's, it's not truly rectangular. It, it's, it slides off to the northerly side a bit. And there's, there's bordering vegetated wetlands that are in the rear yard, which is, which have been delineated. And if we obtain a favorable outcome from this meeting, we will be following up with a notice of intent application with the Conservation Commission to seek approval for the construction of this garage. When Mr. O'Sullivan first contacted me for this project, said we have to do an existing site survey, I located the existing house, he stated he wanted to build a twenty-eight by thirty-two foot garage. When I plotted that out, it fell within ten feet of the side yard setback. I explained to him if we did a detached garage by right, he can be within, up to ten feet. So I told him it would be, it would be, we could probably work with the zoning board where we have the hardship of the wetlands to the rear yard, we'd maintain at least ten feet. So even if, if he did a detached garage, he could do it by right, but with an attached garage, he'd at least keep ten, ten feet, that I thought he might have a, a strong case with this board to come in for relief. The existing one-car garage is, is roughly fourteen by twenty-four. So basically, he, we're basically looking to extend the rear line of this garage. When limited, there's a thirty-five-foot nostructure zone under the local Conservation Commission bylaw. You can't place any structure within thirty-five feet of a wetland. This is a thirty-five-foot buffer zone in this area. What I've also shown is, in this blue area here, is the actual buildable area for this property. Maintaining a twenty-foot front yard setback, a fifteen-foot side yard setback, and not allowing any work to go beyond the thirty-five-foot nostructure zone, he's only left with four thousand five hundred and eighteen square feet of buildable area to work with. As you can see, in this area, there's an existing house. On the right-hand side, he only, he has seventeen point two feet to the lot line. To the back, he's basically at the thirty-five-foot nostructure zone. He might have three or four feet. And the existing house currently sits forty feet back from the front property line. So as far as criteria number one, for a hardship, we would look at the wetlands to the rear. He cannot go to the rear at all on this property without seeking some sort of variance from the, the Conservation Commission, which would be difficult to obtain. He could not go to the northerly side where the existing setback is seventeen point two feet. If he did any sort of garage addition or, or changing the configuration of this, it would require a variance. In the position of the existing house, being forty feet off the lot line, is problematic in its own right. He, he's dealing with an existing condition where his house is situated now. If it was pulled forward to twenty feet, we'd be setback, but, but it was constructed in nineteen forty-six. This exists, the, the footprint of this is basically the same since nineteen forty-six. So our claim would be, the, the lot is slightly asymmetrical, there's wetlands to the rear of the lot that, that, that cause an environmental restriction, and the positioning of the existing house causes some hardship. What we did, we also looked at the surrounding properties, and a lot of the surrounding properties are, have two-car garages, single-family homes, basically in line with this existing house. We had looked at an option of pulling this garage extension forward. Right, right now, I'm proposing it forty feet back. It's in line with the front of the house, but what if I pulled it forward to the twenty foot front yard setback? With a twenty-six by thirty-two garage, in the back-left corner of the garage, he'd still be twelve point eight feet off the lot line. So he would still need relief from this board. Additionally, when he met with the architect, Steve Basick for this project, who's a licensed architect in the town of Redding, pulling this forward, it, it wouldn't fit in with the neighborhood, and it wouldn't work, it, it wouldn't work with his layout, and we, we thought it would be visually a, a negative impact to his abutters. So what I told Mr. Sullivan he should do is, he should go talk to his neighbors ahead of time. Try to get letters of support and to explain to them why we're looking to position this garage extension where we're looking to position it. We didn't want to have, be forced to pull it forward. It would still require a variance on the left-hand side, and it wouldn't fit in with the neighborhood. He obtained over twenty letters of support from abutters that have been submitted for the record as part of this hearing. All the direct abutters support this petition. This plan was presented to them, that everyone's in favor of it. In fact, when we go to conservation, I'll note it for this board as well, one neighbor downgrading of the property has had drainage, historic drainage problems, is, was just concerned with additional impervious area possibly adding to any sort of problem. So what Mr. O'Sullivan stated he would do is, he, we're going to put a drywell in, any, any roof runoff from the addition will be hard-piped to an underground drywell. Not that that plays into your decision tonight, but that's just what Mr. O'Sullivan was trying to do when he worked with the neighbors outside of this board. That's why you don't see anyone here tonight for questions. He's already made efforts to go around and, and talk to everyone on that. We did provide a detailed description how we meet the four criteria for this project. Criteria number one, describing the circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography of the land. As I stated, we feel the wetlands present a hardship. The position of the existing house on its own is a hardship in the asymmetrical nature as a minor third aspect, but it's still an aspect, presents a problem for this. Number two, describe how the literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance related to circumstances, especially affecting the land or structure in question, would involve substantial hardship financially or otherwise to the petitioner. This gets into some of the options we looked at. I, I originally said, hey, this is a mudroom area here, okay, that has been in place since nineteen forty-six. I, I should note this, Mr. O'Sullivan has three children. I wrote their ages down. Nine, ten, and twelve. So it's, it's a small four-bedroom house, three of the bedrooms, the fourth bedroom's very small. This is a mudroom area. If he eliminated the mudroom, then the garage could be slid over, and it would conform to this. That, that didn't work. When we met with the architect, is that, the, the garage is going to go in at the same elevation as now. There's a set of stairs that lead up into the mudroom. If the mudroom was eliminated, it's an area they use all the time with three kids, shoes, coats, racks, everything else, then they would have to then put steps up into their existing structure, which does not work with the layout of, of the project. The architect looked at that. It would be a hardship financially as well to, to remove that mudroom. There's a cost associated with that. Not only losing space in, in the existing house, but the, but the demolition costs to remove that area. Number three, describe how desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. I think you can see by over twenty letters of support and all the direct abutters in support of this, no one saw this as a negative impact to the neighborhood. Everyone was in support of Mr. O'Sullivan. As we stated in our upfront, the only concern was drainage, which we're going to relieve with the drywell. So we, we think this is in keeping with the neighborhood, and it appears from the letters we received, they feel it is as well. And then number four, describe how desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purposes of zoning ordinance of the town of Redding. As I, as I stated, a detached garage could be constructed by right within ten feet. We know this isn't detached, but, but we feel with the letters of support from the neighbors, that the fact that we do have the hardship, that this will fit in with the neighborhood, that it works well, and, and we don't see it being any sort of negative impact to the surrounding properties or, or the intent of the bylaw. The intent of the bylaw was to protect surrounding neighbors from any sort of development with zoning criteria. We know we need relief from the board, and that's why we're here tonight. And would you like to add anything?
I just want to say thanks to each of you for listening to my appeal. I know you're here as volunteers, and I want to acknowledge, actually, I've kind of been going around on this for nearly a year, and I just want to acknowledge how good the people in the office in Town Hall have been, more united, met me a couple of times, and Clint Redmond. I've been in there a good few ti, I'd say nearly four times. I was kind of going over different ideas, and they've been very good to me. And I think Jack's nearly covered everything here, fourteen years. I love the neighborhood, and I see, you know, on, you know, I live when we buy a home, we're in it for our life, you know, we don't, that's it, and that's kind of the way I see my house here in Redding. And I'm just trying to get to, get, get it to a point where the rest of my days there will be comfortable.
And I should, I should just add, sorry to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
There'll be a two-car garage, there will be unfinished area, but he's not going to be finishing the area. Down the line, he could. He'd have to pull a permit through Glenn to do so. He doesn't have the finances here. He wants to get this up and just have, have the two-car space, but it will remain unfinished right now.
I should add, like, oh, I think there was like thirty people on the list from the abutters list, and there was only the one person down at the end of Walnut Street, Mrs. Fitzpatrick, and that was the lady who had mentioned to me that she gets water from up the street, but she's kind of down at the bottom of Walnut Street, and I think she's been into Town Hall a couple of times over the recent months. I think I got her resolved her issue through the O B of some drain pipes that are near her property line. But I really don't feel that anything I'm doing up on Curtis Street has any impact. But I've been in, I sat down with her and her mother, and I stayed there nearly an hour, and in the end, I said, look, if it makes you feel happy, what if I do a drywell? She's fine. She's, you know, signed a letter of support. So I felt the only person that had any concern at all was here to work with her on it, you know.
Thank you. I should point out, before we get to the board or anything that we have comments on, that as you can see, we have four members now. We just had a member recuse herself. She felt, you know, she couldn't vote on this particular case. So what you're going to need on this, this is a variance request, so it needs to be in unanimous approval for this to pass tonight. You need the four votes of the members here. If you prefer, what your options are is, you could ask for continuation and go on to the, you might say, the next meeting, and hopefully, I would expect that we would have five voting members at the next meeting then on that. Or you can continue tonight and take your chances and go with the four votes that you're going to get tonight. Feel free to, if you want two minutes to talk it over, Jack, outside, that's fine.
I think we're okay to go with the four members voting tonight.
Okay.
Thank you for presenting. I knew that was the case. We're comfortable with the four members.
Yeah, I certainly though, just wanted to point it out to you for the record that, you know, you are aware of that, and we'll do that. David, any question? Or let's say this, I'll read Glenn's comments on this again. Glenn had a memorandum on this. He noted, Curtis Street, thirty-one Curtis Street. This is a proposal to construct an addition to add a two-car garage, twenty-six feet by thirty-two feet to the left-hand side of the dwelling, that will be located ten-point-three feet from the property line rather than the required fifteen feet. A variance for this proposal is required. The property is located in S-15 district. The applicant has been informed of the difficulty in obtaining a variance. So that's Glenn's comments. David, any questions on this?
So I just want to go over, you know, you've been around the block a time or two with regard to these types of applications, and the first criteria of the variance statute is often the most difficult, and I want to educate myself a little bit more in taking that into consideration and go through it with you. The application is not based upon the size of the lot, correct?
Correct.
It's not based upon the shape of the lot?
As a third minor criteria, it is somewhat asymmetrical, but I'm...
Trapezoidal, if you would?
More so, correct.
You know, that's not considered irregularity?
It's not rectangular. I'm not holding that as my main hardship, but just to point out to the board, it's asymmetrical.
I appreciate your petition. I'm not, I'm not going to, I don't, I'm not doing this to debate with you. I just want to, I want to understand.
Right.
And the topography of the land of the property, gently rolling, I think, was sort of where you were with that?
Correct.
Okay. And so there would be, so the additional criteria is sort of one that we often maybe take for granted, but it's an important one, and that is that there's absolutely no other location to cite this without further encroaching on other setbacks. And I want to make sure that, you know, I understand, completely understand the additional options that you've looked at. They were all deemed less desirable to the homeowner, and I think we all take that into consideration as well, because we're all homeowners and property owners, and we want what's best for our property. All right, I just wanted to, I wanted to understand the first criteria. I think I understand the rest of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I say something on that?
Sure.
Jack had mentioned about moving the garage forward as an option, but like the neighbors across the street, like I said, I've met everybody, and I've talked to them all, you know, a couple of neighbors across the street said, and they wrote it in the letters that they submitted, and they had a specific objection to me coming out in the lot, because I'd be kind of coming in their face with the garage if I moved the garage out towards the front of the lot, you know?
I understand.
Continuing where you left off, on just the first criteria, there is a topographical problem with the lot, and that is the vegetated woodland area. So that does impose a restriction on it. It cannot be moved. It's certainly not the subject matter of what this board can deal with. In terms of what you had, Jack, what you had mentioned before in your wording on the criteria, you did indicate that tearing down the breezeway and making it a detached addition garage at this point, but I would assume that somewhere along the line, you plan to use the space above the garage as residential area of residence. And if that be the case, that creates a problem. But it does not remove where you're not going to use that as residence now. It does not remove the ability to take down the breezeway and move the garage over basically five feet, not five feet, four-point-seven feet, to get to the end result that you're looking for. And that, again, you sat through the last case. The variance puzzle is very specific. David mentioned that before. I think the rest of the board indicated that the, that one case does not predicate how the board is going to move in a following case or cases down the line, but the variance puzzle is very restrictive, and the most difficult of the criteria are the first two. I can see in the first one, you have credentials. On the second one, because there is an additional option, I think it becomes a question in my mind whether we, whether I could vote in favor of that, only because there is another solution. You can get your end result, which is building of the two-car garage, which is the subject matter of how the case came in, by taking down the breezeway, the attached, the mudroom, whatever you want to call it.
If I could just add to that, John, to respond to that. Not only would it be the mudroom, but a portion of the deck would have to come down. And as I stated, right now, from the existing garage into the mudroom, there's a set of stairs up with a doorway. If that mudroom got taken down, and the garage got built over there, there would still be steps in a doorway that now would affect the living space. So one of the criteria for number two is a financial hardship. He'd be losing at least a portion of his deck. He'd be losing the existing mudroom area that's existed since nineteen forty-six, and he may have to, he would end up having to reconfigure some of the existing layout of the house. So I think from a financial standpoint, that would be a burden to him.
But there's another option to that, too. You're asking for a seven-by-twenty-six-foot storage area to the rear of the garage area as part of the proposal. How that is delineated is an issue. Definitely, financial is part of the picture, but it is not a major part of the picture. And you have been through this a number of other times.
Right. I'm just pointing out, one of the criteria is financial, so I'm just pointing out on that. Do you have a full basement?
I do have a basement, but you mentioned a shed at the back. I just wanted to explain how that shows up on the plan that Stephen Basic done. That shed is, he has done, we'd done the gambrel roof so we could match the roof of the existing house, so it'd look better, you know, and put the two dormers in front, just kind of matched it in with our existing cave. The things at the rear, we're kind of keepy in the existing footprint of the existing garage, you know? Like it's, I don't have the map in front of me, but if you look at the map from Stephen Basic, the, there's a tree page.
Yes, I'm looking at that right now, and that's the architectural design of it.
Yeah, and the reason he had to kind of put that at the back was to kind of maintain the existing footprint of the existing garage, you know, because the garage at the moment is kind of in, the deck is kind of built around with the rear, you know? And so that's why we went for the extra kind of storage space at the back of the garage, because what I found when I was going around meeting the neighbors, they were allowing me to look at their new garages as well, and what I was seeing in there was when they had the two cars in the garage, you know, they had bikes, they'd smoked loads of different items, and you could see their doors sitting up against them. They even said that they regretted not doing something different, because they felt, you know, the kids, the toys, the bikes were kind of stacked along the sides of the garage. So I felt instead of talking with Stephen Basic, that it would be nice to have something at the rear to fill that, the existing footprint of the garage, just there at the moment, you know?
Even if he took off that depth, if he took it off, which he doesn't want to do, in the mudroom state, we'd still need relief from the setbacks. The depth isn't so much the issue, it's more the width.
Contractor mentioned, like, it could cost me up to ten thousand to take down the mudroom in terms of cost. I'm already at nearly three thousand, and I haven't even started the garage, you know, between the vehicle fees and the permit fees, the plot fees, I'm as close as twenty-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and I feel I haven't even started, you know?
Well, I looked at it a little differently. I looked at it by moving it, by moving it over in essence, three-tenths of a foot, taking off the existing mudroom. Yes, you would have shoring up the house from the existing mudroom, which has already been shored up, because that breezeway was, I'm going to assume, as in so many cases in Redding, that breezeway was an open breezeway initially and then enclosed, so that the structural walls probably are already there for the size of the house. By moving the garage over then, just a small portion, you would not be losing anything in terms of the restructuring of the house. It's just that you would be able then to take the proposed storage area in the back and add that all the way back, so that you would have, in essence, a reality of a garage that is twenty-six by thirty-two, which is right now only twenty-six by twenty-five, with a seven by twenty-six, or seven by, I'm not sure what the, seven by twenty-two proposed storage area in the back.
It could be done, John. We know the mudroom could be removed. We're not here to fight that.
I know, I know, I know.
But we see it as a financial burn, and to be fair, I think a lot of weight should be given that, you know, I've never seen this many letters of support for a project. These are the people who live in the neighborhood. They support him again, have one objection, and he did spend a lot of time going around, making an effort. This wasn't a design we just put on paper. I originally shrunk them down. I said, you got to keep at least ten feet, because I think I can maybe talk about a detached garage. I know it's attached, but just as you spoke about, years ago, people would do their home, have a breezeway, do a detached garage, and then they close them in, and it's ten feet away from the lot line. He's hoping just to do the right thing. I think the only way we can wrestle with number two is for us to make a case that it would be a financial impact to him. Maybe this board won't agree with that, but to him, it definitely is a concern. He's on a very limited budget.
I work with Ash Dice as a boxer, as I do for a living, and Adam O'Malley's a great man, but he's not a good man to be, so I'm not on big money. I come to people with Father John McCarty for a living, and I work part-time, so, you know, maybe to some people who come before you, twenty-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars isn't a lot of money, but it is to me, I have three kids, and I have gone around in circles with Donna on the thing. We've gotten input from the neighbors, and we felt really that the design that Stephen put together is a match back with the gambrel roof, because we like the way it looks with the house. It's actually a more expensive roof, you know, than some people would have put on an A-shaped roof. Some extensions are done that way on the street, but we just don't feel that they fit in as good, you know? One other point there, on the setback, like at the front on the thing, we're only at fourteen pints, seven inches, like we're only six or seven inches from the fifteen-foot at the front, so visually from the street, when you look at the house when it's done, you're not really going to notice that we've interfered much with the setback, you know? We're almost there to the left of the garage. You know, Jack talked me into bringing it down from twenty-eight to twenty-six. I submitted my letter kind of explaining why I'd like it held at the twenty-six, you know?
That's all I have, with one exception, with one observation. In the years that I've sat on the board, the letters from the neighborhood have been very important, on special permits, on variances, they mean very little, because the variance, the variance, we're not talking about the neighborhood in per se. If you can meet the second, the third, and fourth criteria in the board's impression of what you're asking for, it's granted regardless of everybody, if those twenty-three letters that come in says, I don't think that this is appropriate. If the board perceives that it's not going to affect adverse of the neighborhood, it's going to vote in favor of it anyways. So to me, in the past that I've dealt with, the letters from the abutters and the neighbors really don't have as much of an input as it does with a special permit.
I might add, John, if someone was going for a variance and the director abutters opposed it, that does weigh heavily into the board's, and usually the board asks if they can work with those abutters, maybe continue the hearing to try to work and come to some sort of arrangement. Mr. O'Sullivan went out even prior to any sort of hearing to canvass the neighborhood, and I mean, I've never seen anyone get more than twenty letters of support.
I agree, totally.
I do think it should weigh in a little bit, because I think if there was negative impact, let's say twenty neighbors all oppose us, you would be hard pressed to approve it, because that neighborhood's basically saying, we don't want it. I think when you're looking at the public good, that weighs into it. So if twenty people say no, then that may not be in the public's interest. In this case, over twenty are saying it, they're comfortable with this type of project. So I do think it carries a little bit of weight, and he did spend a lot of time going about doing it. I know the major things are hardship, and then the second criteria, and I know that's what we're going to struggle with, number two, in this case. Usually, it's number one we struggle with. If he didn't have wetlands, we wouldn't be in front of you. I wouldn't even be here tonight. That's his hardship. But if we can somehow work through number two, I do think he's made quite an effort What's that, John?
Sorry. When I first reviewed the application, I was impressed with what appeared to be the amount of effort that went into putting this thing together. And I did have an initial concern about abutter input, because we didn't have that at the time we got the initial application. And I was also concerned about neighborhood impact. And before I get to the variance criteria, I'll talk about those two a little bit. I took a ride over through the neighborhood. There's several properties with two-car garages, the likes of which you want to do now. So in my view, just looking at things, it would appear that it would certainly, in my mind, be no detriment to the appearance of the neighborhood or to the public good by the structure as it is proposed, okay? Because there's several others there, the two-car garages exactly, well, very similar to yours. The abutter inputs took care of another question I had, which obviously you did a lot of work going about doing that. As far as the various criteria is concerned... As far as variance criteria is concerned, the only one I had real difficulty with was number two, and I guess one of the other things that went through my mind as I reviewed some of the additional material is that, and I'll ask the question, is there a disability issue here?
I have a disability, but I didn't really want to bring it in.
I know, and I totally understand that, okay? Totally understand that.
It's personal to me, you know? And my back was broken in three places. In the last twenty-five years, I've, I've been dealing with it, it has gotten progressively worse. I'm, I'm not in cuckoo land, I know that in the next twenty years, it might get worse still, you know, so I'm, I'm being seen by two doctors at the rigging, ongoing, first final works, final injections, and so on and so forth. I did fall in the driveway a couple of years ago, I was seen, I had to go to the Cambridge Hospital, I hurt my ankle, it was on ice. And so for a long time, the two-car garage has kind of been the dream for us, you know, we're just kind of getting there. It's hard financially with the kids and to try and come up with money. But I didn't want to come before the board, I felt I had, I felt I had enough in my responses to the four criteria that I studied on the website. I felt I, I had enough, but then in the last week, I just was getting a little nervous that, you know, a lot of people in the neighborhood have twenty-four-foot garages, and they regret building the twenty-four-foot garages. I felt I would just see it before. I went out actually today, and I measured the width of the door in my car, and I, I sent the note to, to Jack. It's forty-seven inches wide, so when you drive in to a garage, to clearly get out without any discomfort or trying to pull yourself out of the car, my, my back is fused from my C, from my tailbone, all the way up to T twelve, and so I don't have movement in my back in that level, on those, that degree levels that other people do. So, you know, I have to swing out my legs, I have a vehicle that's high off the ground because of my situation, you know, so, but when I looked at the width of other people's garages, I, I just, I felt that this garage is looking like it's gonna cost me forty, fifty thousand. I don't want to build something that's, I'm gonna be sorry that it was a mistake that I didn't ask for from twenty-four to twenty-six foot wide. I was warned all along about how difficult it is coming before the board. Glenn Redmond said it to me a couple times, a few other people said it to me, but I felt that if I, if I had enough of, of things put together, and I really felt I had answered the four questions, from what my reading of the thing was, and I have studied other people's cases who have come before the board, I spent a great deal of time on your website. I, I know obviously it's getting into letters of support, Maureen, this week, but that was, because it simply took me a lot longer than I anticipated. I ended up going in, sitting down with people and chatting, and I thought I might get one visit done in an afternoon and then back to the kids, but, so it did take me longer, and that's why I had, I didn't have the letters in with the initial application last month.
Well, I can certainly understand why you didn't want to bring it up, but I, I got the sense in reading the application that, that that did influence to some extent what you, perhaps the size of the garage that you had ended up with, because, you know, you wanted to be able to get in and out of your car, sufficient room to open up the door to allow you to do that without a problem. So, I just want to put that on the table, at least that's the impression I got. And I understand what you're dealing with, because I have a son with fusions too. We did our garage so that he could get in and out of the car with a wheelchair in the garage, so it's, it's, it's...
Well, then, I mean, for my life, the way I've seen the progression of my injury and the arthritis, I envision a day where I might need a ramp within the confines of the garage into the breezeway. Like I said, I'm not a negative-thinking person, what happened to me happened at the navel of my life, but I'm, as I said, I'm not in cuckoo land either, I know that down the road, one level living in my house, I taught all that out, you know what I mean? That's, that's reality, you know?
So I would just summarize my comments by saying, I, I don't have any problem with the variance criteria, the one I wrestle with was two. And I've heard some inputs this evening that make me feel more comfortable with that criteria, nothing else.
Okay, thank you, Si. Looking at the, myself looking at the four criteria and seeing, you know, that you do have quite an impact of wetlands in the back there, you lose almost half the use of your lot there based on wetlands back there. So I, I think that certainly has a bearing on criteria number one. What I was looking at, and obviously it's been brought up just now with Si, was the size of the garage, twenty-six feet wide, could that be reduced? I mean, I, I've seen two-car garages down to twenty feet wide. You don't need the two separate doors, you, you have one door in the center, and you, you go with twenty feet. I'm looking that you, you might even be able to go with twenty-two feet in this one, and what would that do? They'd take four feet off, that'd be fourteen point three feet, which is a, a little more palatable, I think, than what you have now on that. Then that would increase the front there, as you would look at it from the front, you would have over fifteen feet then for your front setback on, on the side, the front, the corner of the garage there as it approaches the front. Had you looked at that at all, decreasing the size of the garage, a couple of three feet, four feet?
In fact, I, I don't think, I, to be honest, I don't think I've seen a two-car garage twenty feet wide, it would be real tough.
I can see architectural plans, I, I've looked...
I, I, I believe you, but with today's, you know, I drive a Chevy Avalanche somewhat, smaller cars would work.
And they're getting smaller.
I know, I've seen twenty, basically twenty-two is the cutoff. Typically, you see it like a twenty-four by twenty-four garage for a two-car garage.
Yeah.
Like I stated, I'm being upfront, when he first presented it, it was twenty-eight, and I said, we need to pull this back to get at least ten feet, to have a chance with this, even with the case we have with hardships and whatnot. I didn't know about his situation until tonight. I know I have a twenty-four-foot wide garage, my wife has a Suburban, I have a Chevy Avalanche, it's tight with three kids, that's our own storage area.
Big cars, yeah.
Yeah, I know, so, could he take two feet out of it and make it twenty-four? Sure, he'd still be twelve feet.
Yeah.
The only thing, like I, when I was doing the measure of the car today for Jack, like I kind of took a quick look at the garage, and like I had talked to the architect about, like two ten-foot garage doors, and say ten-foot, ten-foot, and then say two feet at the end, you know, that's ten, ten-twenty-two, four, six, that's the twenty-six feet, and I appreciate what you say about the cars, you know, you can get a smaller car, but for a parent today, like every Wednesday and Friday night, I have three kids, I take seven boys who are twelve years old from Redding, all representing the town, and they play in a private soccer team with Rush down in Bedford, so, yeah, I do a big car, and that's really one of the reasons to pay into the, the size of the garage, but, you know, with the family, it's useful, some of the kids that I take on Wednesday and Friday nights, they come from single-parent households where there are other kid, you know, kids, and so I'm doing people favors by doing the careful thing for them, and, you know, while I hate driving a gas bus, I do, it's expensive, but on those nights, it's, it's worth it to have the kids together, you know, so. But like, it's just the width of the twenty-four, just, it wouldn't do it for them, you know, like it, having, looking at spending so much money on it. You know, and really, I'm just within six inches of the, of the fifteen-foot setback, and it's fourteen point seven in the front, you know, and it's, it's not my fault, it's really the shape of the lot, and I'll be honest with you, when I bought the place, I never knew about the wetlands in the back. I didn't, no, I, no idea they were there, I had no idea that it was going to be a curtailment on the future potential, you know, it wasn't until years later that I find, I think, I was able to do it lines.
And I think the three kids does play into it. And when I, I have three kids, when I had two, I had a small vehicle. Once you hit the third, you get into sports, you pick up one of their friend, now you have a bigger vehicle, so he's kind of looking at his situation, I know each case is viewed on its own. The situation is him and his wife and three kids, kids under twelve, he knows what vehicles he had, he knows what works.
You know, you go to a park, public municipal lot, public lot, you know what parking space is lined at? Nine feet by eighteen feet?
Right.
Eighteen, nine by eighteen.
But then you, nine by eighteen, and you get in, and you open your door, and that's what we're saying, so if his space is nine, the other block's nine, and then he's saying his door's third, forty-two inches, three and a half, you start adding that up, and you eat up space quickly. That's why I think for his, like a twenty-two or twenty-four...
Oh, it's nice if you can do it, but as I said, I mean, sometimes, you, you know, you own something and you have a constraint with it, and you have to live with that constraint.
Which we know, and that's, that's why we're here.
That's where you're here, I know, I know.
If we made it, we wouldn't be here.
And, and, you know, it's, oh, Jack, let me ask you a question too on the survey plan, on the plot plan.
Sure, yeah.
You have it laid out as a rectangle, it looks like.
Correct.
With the ten point three feet back, but yet when you look at the layout on the architectural plan, you do have that knock-in of two feet for the storage. It's twenty, it's, the actual garage itself is twenty-six by twenty-five, right? Then you have another seven foot back by twenty-two foot, but that's, that's kicked in two feet.
Okay.
So it's not reflective of what's on the plot plan, does that affect what that offset is at the corner, the ten point three feet?
It would.
I would think it would.
I didn't know there was a kick in.
Yeah.
Steven Basic, sorry, Steven Basic had a particular engineering or architectural reason for doing that, I can't...
It would help our case, is what Jack was saying.
Well, it's certainly going to, yeah, and I, I know you may not be able to calculate now exactly what that offset would be.
Yeah.
But it looks like the corner of that garage might be closer to eleven feet as opposed to ten point three feet.
Correct.
On, on the corner.
This was one of those situations where we hit this footprint twenty-six by thirty-two, trying to get the architect to get the plans in for the hearing, they had already provided a plan.
Just coordinating all parties, yeah.
And by the time this came in, I didn't know that was an adjustment, but that would help our case.
It, it would, and, you know, and, and I can certainly, and I've always felt, I know David's working with the bylaws, I don't know if they have looked at the differences in regards to offsets between detached and attached garage, and it's just a quirk of the bylaws that if somebody could build a detached garage ten feet off the property line, whereas if somebody has an attached to their house, it becomes part of the house, or therefore has to be fifteen feet.
Lot coverage becomes a lot coverage issue.
Yeah, it does. It's, it's a big difference, it does. It becomes part of the house then in slot coverage. If it's detached, it's an accessory structure.
Correct.
So it's, you know, so, and, and you're absolutely right, if this was detached, you wouldn't be here in front of us, it would, ten feet would be okay. So, you know, I...
I was hoping that would weigh in a little bit in this case, where it is a garage, it's not like we're adding a sunroom or addition to a house, and it's fifteen, a detached garage would be about ten, if it's not detached, but we, we are talking about a garage use.
Yeah. And, so that's, you know, you know, if you're, that, that, those are basically my comments on, on this, was I was wondering if the, the width of the garage could be cut down a little bit to gain, gain a little more, I would, personally, I would like to see at least the fifteen feet in front, offset for the garage, and then I, I think you have an argument of the way the property lines are skewed, it certainly weighs in in argument number one, the shape of the lot. It, it's a skewed property line and...
And the position of the existing house.
Yeah, the shifting makes the offset less as it goes back, but from the front, it would be fifteen feet. So we can proceed on this, I can, any further questions from board? And I, I can open it up for public hearing, obviously this is not open to the public, but we'll open, close, open and close it, but if, wanna go ahead and do that, any, we'll open this up to public comment, and seeing there's nobody in the audience to comment on this, we will therefore go ahead and close the public comment. Any further comments from board members?
I am swayed more after hearing the, the conditions that the applicant is in, or the situation the applicant is in, and whether it's ten point three feet, or eleven feet, or twelve feet, or fourteen point seven feet, it's still a setback issue, and, I mean, we've moved on this before, variances have always, always been tough before this board, but I viewed it initially a little bit differently before hearing the situation that the applicant is in, so I'm, I'm certainly swayed more by that, and certainly if we stick with what appears to be the architectural rather than the certified plot plan, which we would need to be, which we would need to be revised anyways...
I would like to see that revised, right, and get that correct offset up there in the back corner.
Yeah, which I'll need to do anyways with conservation if this gets granted. I, I need to show what's gonna be built, and we should have a good record of that, so I would revise it.
Well, the board has had difficulty with granting something without an official document to, to...
Attached as an exhibit.
Exactly, attached to the decision.
Right, so it's, in that particular case, Jack, if we continue, we may want to suggest a continuation, and you supply an updated plot plan with the correct layout or the correct footprint of the garage and storage shed with the offsets there, and then that's something we would act on then at that time.
I think that's a good suggestion, as a board, I would do that, we would seek to continue to correct that.
Any further questions?
No.
No? Okay, so in this particular case, you would request a continuation to able, to enable you to submit a revised plot plan showing the, a new...
Correct.
Yeah, layout of the garage and storage shed there with the correct offsets on that. Okay.
The question is, when, how much time do they need?
Yeah.
I can do it quickly, I, I don't...
I would think so, our next meeting is November sixth, two weeks from...
Two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks, first, first Thursday in November, which I believe is November sixth, yeah.
And after that, we're off for a considerable time.
Yeah.
Because of town meeting, in holidays.
I don't think we have any other meetings in November, and we would have, I believe, one around the first of December.
I can have this done quickly, that this change won't take more than half an hour of time.
Okay, so we can put your, you would be agreeable to...
The sixth.
For the November sixth?
Is that working, Karen?
Yeah.
That we're agreeable to November sixth?
Okay. I know Maureen, Maureen used to have forms for a continuation, do you have those? No.
Is there one of those cases?
Is that right? And, because usually, it's the, it's the petitioner that has to request a continuation, and then we make a motion to accept that request.
Just as a...
But we, we could, nothing up there?
If you didn't make it on November sixth, if you didn't make it on November sixth, our next meeting is December fourth, just to have, just to have that information, not that you, just to make sure.
Okay, I, I think, I think we'll be also, we don't have that here now, we'll just note it into the minutes, Kim will note it into the minutes, that the petitioner's request on a continuation to November sixth.
When was it filed?
Huh?
When was the actual application filed?
Oh.
Fourteen dash twenty.
Oh, fourteen.
I don't remember what's the date. Stamped in when?
Ah, stamped in, you, you have to ask these questions, John, huh? Let's see, oh, received September twenty-third.
Oh, yeah, we, my turn.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion from a board member to agree to the petitioner's request to continue the meeting to November sixth.
I move to grant the petitioner's request to continue case fourteen dash twenty to the November sixth, like two thousand and fourteen, so the board will...
And you did request that, correct?
Yes.
In order to...
In order to modify the...
In order to certify, certify the new, yeah, update the plot plan, yeah. Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
I got a second from John Durema. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor? Okay, four zero zero, we'll see you November sixth, and...
Thank you.
Hopefully all four members that heard it tonight will be here for November sixth, and we will continue with them. Si? Si?
If Eric attends that meeting, he's going to get, have to get up to speed, is he not?
He would. We, we could have Eric do that. He could actually see the tape of tonight's meeting.
Right.
Get up to speed, or else we could continue with just the four of us that are here tonight and vote on that.
I would suggest, I would suggest we contact him and let him know that-
Yeah.
If he's planning on attending, I would suggest he do it.
I will, I will talk to Maureen about that, about getting him a tape of the meeting so that he can at least watch this portion, and he will be up to speed anyway.
Right.
So he would be able to vote that night.
That would help us, I think. That would be great.
Certainly would.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, it's a continuation.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Eventually, on November sixth, you can write it up if we have a-
I'll make a write-up continuation.
No.
Don't have to write it up.
You don't have to, no.
Then I'll, then I'll make the motion on whatever it is.
When we write up, when we do the November sixth decision, it'll just be noted that this is a continuation from this day.
And I'll, I'll commit it right now.
Oh, okay.
Should I put up there a question?
Did you catch the, the score?
Yet, they're winning.
Oh, what's the score?
Seven nothing. When I check, we'll come.
O E.
Fifteen minutes ago.
Just checking.
Okay. I'll work on those a little later. Let's continue. Okay, let's take a look here at our agenda tonight. We have, let's see. The agenda. Okay, we have other business. We have some minutes to go through, and we have other business, ZAC. You want to do the minutes first? Get those out of the way?
Why don't we?
I think so. Let's see. I know I gave my comments to Maureen, and I believe she's incorporated them into the finals. I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at these yet. But we have three dates here. We have August twenty-first, September fourth, and September eighteenth. Why don't we tackle August twenty-first? Does anybody need any time to review those?
I only see one correction on page three.
Okay.
Just before minutes on the motion that, that Si-
Yeah.
Seconded by Durima, the zoning board of appeals move to accept the advocate's request to with, should be withdraw.
Oh, advocate's request to, right. Withdraw the case without prejudice. Do you see that, Kim?
I do, thank you.
Okay, so if you note that.
That's the one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Si, for catching that. Anything else?
Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on August twenty-one, two thousand and fourteen.
As, as amended.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, five zero zero. Thank you. And next one is September fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
I think I'm, I'm satisfied, and, does anybody need a few minutes to go through it?
The only edit I see was under the ZAC report on the other business on page two. Special town meeting was September twenty-ninth.
So not October second.
Correct.
Okay, so if we can change that, Kim?
Yeah.
September twenty-ninth. Thank you, David. Okay.
I will accept the minutes of September four, two thousand and fourteen, CBA meeting minutes, as amended.
Second that.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you. And the minutes of September eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen. And we're just, I think all we need to discuss is the first two pages. We don't want to mention too much about the executive session.
Motion to approve the minutes of September eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, as written.
Second by. Get that. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you. Okay. Under the business, we have a, yeah, update or on the zoning committee or ZAC report. David, if you care to give us a summary of what's been happening?
Sure. I first start with an apology to the board, the chair. This was a, an item that was added last minute, and I had meant to mention it to you to get your acceptance prior to the meeting, but it slipped. So as we go through, I'll try to give that explanation now.
Okay.
Hopefully, it still, still sits well with you.
Yeah.
At the last official meeting of the zoning advisory committee held this past Tuesday, the, many members of town staff were present to discuss the upcoming town meeting in November and to go over the public forum that we had last night over at the senior center and to discuss the town's new plan to present some of the zoning bylaw rewrite at November's town meeting under Article Eight, and to save several sections to April's town meeting, to defer several updated sections to April's town meeting for purposes of trying to keep it simple, I think. Make it a little bit easier to digest at the town meeting level. And so, as part of that, it was brought to my attention that many of the town boards and commissions have been asked to provide, if possible, support to be presented in the warrant in the summary page to the warrant, related to whether or not they support the article that is up for consideration in the warrant. And several boards and commissions have done that. The town manager asked me, because he knew that we were meeting tonight, if I would discuss with the board whether or not we feel a motion upon further review, whether we feel a motion by the board of appeals would be warranted in support of upcoming Article Eight for a town meeting, and that that vote, and the results of that vote would be included in the warrant as evidence of probably one of the primary boards in town that deals with the zoning bylaw in support of the changes that are being made. To that end, I thought it would be wise for me to give at least a summary of the sections that are due to be presented in Article Eight, many of which we've discussed at length as a board, many of which the board has given input, which has actually been included in the updated town bylaw. And I have in my greedy little hands a draft version of the proposed new zoning bylaw. Still, draft dated October sixth, two thousand and fourteen. Still a hundred and sixty-seven pages, a hundred and sixty-four pages. Yes, sir, thank you.
Wow.
But comprehensively rewritten and reorganized to reflect the work that the zoning advisory committee and other boards and commissions have done. And so, prior to town meeting at Sep, on September twenty-ninth, the medical marijuana bylaw was passed, voted up. And all but one of the additional sections were voted up. The section that was voted down by a very slim margin was the purpose section. There was some word smithing that was proposed, and that will be revisited again in April's town meeting. So the sections that are, that comprise Article Eight of the November warrant are the section on administration, which is sort of self-evident, the, the permit granting authority and, and what boards and commissions and staff have authority to grant relief. Use regulations, what would, that's now going to be in section four, administration. Use regulations, which is section five, including accessories, buildings and structures, accessory apartments, which by the way, got quite a bit of attention at last night's public forum. The new section six of intent, intensity regulations. Section seven relating to non-conforming uses in structures. And the new section twelve added, which is applicability and severability, which is essentially a severability clause, meaning if any section of the bylaw is deemed or ruled or judged as invalid, it does not invalidate the entire bylaw. That invalid section would be deemed carved off, and the remaining bylaw would live on. The, these, these sections have been available to the public for some time. Some members of the board may have, especially those that know how many pages the new bylaw is, have certainly been aware of and reviewed these changes and the work product. And I think I would like to leave it up to the, to the chair's discretion as to whether or not it is appropriate prior to November town meeting for this board to offer a vote on whether this board would support the changes being proposed in Article Eight.
I think we could do an informal poll on that, no problem. I have not seen the new ones myself, so I would probably say myself that I don't think it's necessary right now. I haven't seen the new bylaws. It's really not up to us to approve, disapprove, or whatever. I suppose we can support them with a vote. Our job is, at the board of appeals, is more or less to, to hear appeals in regards to the bylaws or to enforce the bylaws as we see fit. But Kathleen, I don't know, you know, I don't know what your feelings and John's and Si's on that, but Kathleen?
Again, I haven't seen them, but just from your summary, maybe some will support. But again, like you said, I would agree with what you said, so.
Right.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the goal, not that this board supports-
Supports.
Right.
The proposed changes that would be contained in Article Eight and thereby supports the work of the zoning advisory committee and those town boards that have worked to put that together.
Yeah.
And I think that would also carry a lot of weight-
Mm-huh.
Coming from this board, who is charged with, as you said, interpreting and, and enforcing-
Enforcing, yeah.
Those regulations. So I think that would actually, may actually carry more weight than some of the other boards that have been consulted and offered support. Don't day in and day out enforce the bylaw. Certainly, if, if, well, and so the timing of this, the reason why it was added last minute, according, after discussion with the town manager, is that the warrant and the warrant summary, and I'm probably calling that the wrong thing, but the warrant description, warrant summary is off of the printers in about a week or so. And if the vote of this board, if we were to grant the vote of support for it to be included in that printing, we would only have this meeting to do it. Because if we wait until the next meeting, it will be past the time where it can be included in the warrant. So I apologize for the short notice. And I had just learned about this two nights ago. But I thought it was appropriate, and I think it is appropriate, in my opinion, that the board offer its support to the proponents, you know, to, to the town planner and to those of us that will be presenting at town meeting to describe and advocate for these changes, which are good for the town. So I'll, again, I'll leave it up to the, I'll leave it up to the members of the board as to whether or not we think a vote of support is, is market.
Some might say that you have to pass the bill to find out what's in it, right?
Yeah. True. I did scan through it, as a matter of fact.
Certainly, I, I think, I think, you know, personally, I support it. I think it's something that's been long overdue, a revamping of the bylaws, and I may not have seen, you know, exactly what the finished product is going to be yet, but I'm confident that it's going to be a substantial improvement over what we have now. We hope, yeah.
I think it was good. I, I did go through it. I didn't read it completely, but I scanned through it. And there's a lot of good work that's in that thing.
Yeah.
Like, we're able to enforce what's there, enforce what's there, and I think what's there is going to be a lot easier in many areas than forced, than we've had now. Only one thing caught my eye, though. In the administrative section of it, it said that the zoning board of appeals will come, will, shall have three members and two associates. Whereas the current one, I believe, says three members and three associates.
Probably a typo?
I don't know if it's a typo, but I mean, it's, it doesn't say as much as, or minimum as, it says shall be.
Yeah, you may want to look into that.
So that would say we have to get rid of one of our members.
Well, that was changed a, I'm going to say, John will know, five, six, ten years ago, maybe?
Wasn't that?
No, I was on the board. I've only been on the board, this is my thirteenth year.
So-
Do you see it there?
I'm going to say ten years. Because the first three years, three or four years, I, there were just three members.
I think it's when you came on the board.
You, it was you and me and Mr. Locken.
I have it right here.
And then it was you and me and Ed.
What's his name?
And I can't think of his last name right now, but I'm going to say that was at least for two terms that I was on. It was three. So I'm going to say five years, it's, I'm, ten years ago.
He's going to read exactly what it is.
But it's, it's, they, they chose to go up to five members. I know exactly when it happened. It was after the West Street development went in. And we went through that forty B, and remember, I think the town was thought that five members would give a better vote than three members on that, after the whole project went in on West Street there. I think that's when it went in.
Could be.
Yeah. But-
So the establishment of the board of appeals, section four, four, one, one. There is hereby established a board of appeals of three members and two associate members to be appointed by the selectmen, as provided in the law, which shall act on all matters within its jurisdiction. There is no shall, there is no shall be.
State law allows, I believe, to have a zoning board. Well, state, state law allows, I believe, to have a zoning board, either have three members or five members.
And we are right now, we are operating right now as five members with two associates.
Right.
Not three members. So if they wanna go down to a three-member board, then two, two people on the board, if this passes, will be...
So you might wanna run that by them, David. Yeah.
Well, we can, yeah, I'll certainly, I'll certainly mention it to the town staff. You know, I, I think that establishes a minimum standard, candidly.
It does. Three is the minimum.
And so I don't think that there's anything that says that we can't have more.
Yes, but that's, that's a town bylaw, so that establishes the parameters of the board.
I'll bring it up to them, yeah. I mean, certainly, it mentions, it bears asking the question.
Yeah. No, it's a good pickup.
It bears, it bears asking the question in the new, in the new section.
What's the current bylaw saying?
Good question.
I thought it said three and three.
Well, it may say that in the beginning, but you'll have to go to the back of the bylaws where they've made adjustments to the bylaws, and...
That should've been picked up, but I bet you it hasn't been picked up.
No, it's never been changed in the front.
Yeah, three and three, three members and three associate members is what's in the current...
Right.
Version of the bylaw.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll bring, I'll bring it up to them.
We're in violation right now.
No. It was amended by town meeting ten years ago.
Well, that may well be.
And it never...
Should've gotten picked up in here.
In the back, Si. All these, all these, you know...
But those amendments should be picked up in the...
You know, all these here?
Official cap?
Amend, amend, yes, but it, it may be good.
Yeah, definitely. And again, I'll, I'll bring it up to them. My thought is those are minimum standards.
It caught my attention.
But no, it bears, it bears noting, certainly, Si, and I'll, and I'll send a note over to Jesse and, you know, she's sort of the keeper of the record.
Desire to go back to three members. That's fine, too.
That's fine.
I can see you...
I'm the oldest person here. I have a lot of...
No, 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 I've been here longest. I get to resign.
Fucking age, not tenure.
Jeez, talking about running for the door, huh?
I know it, huh? I can see.
Well, if you want my input on what we started, the board has never been asked to support or do anything with any bylaw changes in the past thirty years. Never, ever. And I know this is a major change. And I think that in the past, I've always supported the, the stand that this board cannot support or not support a particular bylaw going forward because it's been asked to interpret all of those bylaws. And if you ask me for support in approving, I can't do that because there's issues within this bylaw that I can't support at all. I think it would be a detriment to the town. But I'm not about to go out and say that in any specific area of the bylaw, because I can't. Because if I'm sitting on the board, I have to, I can't have, I can't have a preference that I've already stated, and then move on a particular case comes before me. Otherwise, I would have to recuse myself according to the new state standard of ethics. So I can't do two things at one time. So I can support the ZAC council and what has accomplished and the, the town fathers for granting these funds to go out there and short of recodifying the bylaws, have been able to accomplish something that is going to support the town to a more, to a, to a standard that is elevated to today's needs for the town. But I can't, I, I'll stop right there. I'll just say that I can support the efforts that the town has gone through and the fact that we're going through this exercise, if the rest of town meeting supports it. If I'm on the board, then I would be entrusted to use that language, whatever that language is, to hear the cases before us.
And I'll, and I'll just add to that, that it would still be a very persuasive vote of this board that a majority of the board has supported Article 8.
That's, that's great, I think.
Even if it wasn't unanimous.
Okay.
So anyway, you know, so, so rather than, rather than belabor the point, I, I'd like to make a motion that, that the zoning Board of Appeals cast votes in support of Article 8 that is coming before town meeting on November 10th, or actually, November 10th, but probably not likely November 10th, probably on a date subsequent, but that's the date of the initial town meeting.
Okay. That's basically it. Okay, I got a motion. Second, I can, I have no problems. I would support that.
Okay.
All those in favor? Raise your hand. All those opposed?
One.
Let the record show.
Four one zero.
Four, one, zero on the vote.
And I will pass on, or you get to, I'll pass on to, probably to Jesse and Gene.
John's curious, sir.
Sorry? Well, no, I'll pass this vote on.
Oh, okay.
They'll wanna, they'll wanna include it in the warrant article, and that's going to the printer. You know, it's a section for boards and commissions.
That is it?
I don't think it was ever noted there, or, yeah. I don't know if it at all, it was. We were tasked one time that...
Thank you for your support.
It was five.
You're welcome.
Okay, welcome, David. Thank, thank you for all your...
That's a lot of work.
Efforts in this, and a lot of work, a lot of work.
It's not over yet, but the zoning advisory committee meetings are over.
Ah, good, good.
Coming into the home script.
Yep.
We're, we're going to present that, at town meeting, some of the members of the zoning advisory committee are going to try to be there at the podium to offer support and, and answer questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank, thank you so much for all your time you've put into it, sir. We appreciate it.
Labor of love.
I think that's pretty much, we've covered everything we have on our agenda tonight. I would accept a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
No second? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Everyone, so in an article in town meeting in 1989, 11/27, it addressed the Board of Appeals and associate members of the board.
That, that was before I came on, and when I came on, it was three, three. Yeah. Three, three, three members, three associates.